The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Special meeting of the White Pine County Commission and the White Pine County Road Commission, September 2nd, 2020.
Okay, just after eight o'clock and I guess some of the parties aren't here, but we're going ahead and start the meeting. It's scheduled for 8:00 AM, so here we go. Welcome to the September Special County Commission Meeting for the White Pine County Library on this September 2nd. I hope he stands for this pledge. Lori, what's your name today?
All right, thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is normal, we'll follow the first moment of the meeting for prayer meditation or whatever you'd like, so let's go into that right now. Okay, that being said, we'll go into our first item on the list, which is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone this morning? No, sir. Any public comment in the audience? Seeing none, George, please come.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, in looking over your agenda, item two should be number one, and number one should be number two. If there is no bonding, we should be playing this silly game forever. There's been plenty of time. You're mistreating me and yet you're making allowances for others. Either you have rules and regulations or you don't. Mr. Chairman, I told, I've asked, before and I'm asking again, how many discrepancies or deficiencies do I have to make before you do something about the building inspector? This elected, who's selectively enforcing the law under color of law. I told you numerous times that the biggest single detriment to growth in our city and economy is the building inspector. You're not doing anything. It's time to do something, shake a leg, something. Depending on who you are, nothing gets done, or there is no problem. And that needs to stop. The discrimination needs to stop. Mr. Chairman, state health mandates masks be worn along with social distancing when out in public or in public meetings. Again, Mr. Bolus here has attended at least nine to 10 public meetings that I also have attended, does not wear a mask. As a public official who took an oath to enforce and abide by all laws, needs to comply or resign. The rest of the commission has the same obligation. Do your jobs and resign. You also are, what shall I say, not entitled, you're, you're to enforce these laws. Or get rid of them, one of the two. Don't do it selectively. The biggest problem we have in this community when someone comes in, let's say in my store, without a mask, is the example you folks set when you set the rules and the regulations. You gotta stop that. Recent COVID counts now are up. Forty active, I think it's twenty-eight positive, and nine pending. We're not going down. We're lucky we live where we do. I'm concerned that we lost the public health officer who worked for Peanuts, fifty dollars a month, now we're spending thousands. Where are you gonna get the money? Mr. Chairman, I told you back in July 15, 2020, the planning commission approved an application to split one acre parcel from a 3.8 acre parcel, going against established rules and regulations. I protested that. The appeal is dissection, and you've yet to put me on the agenda. I'm tired of the selective enforcement. Don't create rules and regulations for some that you don't intend to enforce, period. Stop the selective enforcement. Mr. Chairman, a meeting held August 12, 2020, where you consider payment to Senator Ivey to prepare the Heritage Park conceptual plan for a simple round 18 grant application. I asked, where is the proposed location of Heritage Park? I'm still waiting. If it's up there by Love's, again, you do not put a park near a track stop.
Okay, I have a second. Your three minutes are up for your statement.
I'll be back.
All right, is there any other public comment on the phone? In the building, if not seeing none, hearing none, we'll go ahead and go on to open the meeting. Mike, I talked to yesterday, do you think we should do number two first? Or should we just go ahead in order? I was hoping the BLM was gonna be here, but they're not here.
Yeah, we can do number two.
Let's, let's go ahead to page two, item two. Item two is discussion for popular action, the approval of satisfactory arrangement with Western Oil and Western Gold for road maintenance of County Road 1177 contingent upon the BLM approved sufficient bond for CR 1177 within 30 days. Is there any action on that?
Yes, so, yeah, if I can have Bill come up and explain some of his correspondence with James Franklin at Western Oil. At the last meeting, if you recall, James had presented a draft agreement that they would be willing to enter into. So I forwarded it to Bill and asked for his comments, of course, to see what would work. He provided some comments and an email for him. And whether Monday that I forwarded it to him or the yesterday morning, I forwarded back to James Franklin. I said, look, try to incorporate these comments from Bill Calderwood and present another draft. Basically, the statute only requires a satisfactory arrangement, doesn't even require an actual road maintenance agreement, but if that's what your road super requires, then that's what we require. So we're waiting to hear back from James, and Bill had some correspondence from lots of people.
I received a, at 2:51 PM, I received an email from James, and I'll just read it to you, dear Bill. I received suggestions to the road agreement, I need to discuss a couple of issues. I'm leaving for the field, but will work on the agreement late this afternoon and send it over, which I have not received as of when I came to this meeting. If you are available later this evening or early tomorrow morning before the meeting to discuss, please advise. So I sent James a text message, and I sent him an email. I was available at 6:00 AM this morning, and if you wanted to come visit with us, I was available, and I had heard nothing from him. Real quick, they did about a 500-foot test of the gorilla snot. Martin went out and looked at it. I, we don't have much confidence it's gonna work, but we did, they did commit and do that. We are to the process now for the road department, we're waiting on the BLM to respond and give us permission for the test pits to give the gravel source. We're to the point with the water wells now where we're ready to roll on, but per the commitment from James Franklin, we, I will send him an email, we're ready to roll on the water permits. But in order to get a write-away from the BLM, let me see what it is, an application. Yeah, they need a write-away to, yeah, we'll need a write-away. We're working with now with Alicia Hankins, and this is, please submit a separate SF-299 application for each location along with copies of the water applications permits to the state engineering if you have them. So this is kind of, to me, the point, use mics, show me the money. Because the engineering costs for each application is about 2,500 and about $500 for the actual permit to the state. So there's where we're at right now. I'll forward this to James, and I've already talked to basin engineering, they're ready to assist. I let them know that if there's any financial agreement for this, the county will accept, will sign for the water rights, but financially, it's Western Oil had committed that they would do this for us, along with the drilling and whatever. Okay? And that's about what we got. I can forward that on to them and let them know we're waiting on them. But as far as the agreement, I don't think a thing's changed, and I don't worry about it, I think it's...
As of right now, without even a written agreement or anything, do you feel that you have a satisfactory arrangement with Western Oil?
No, I'm, show me the money at this point. I don't wanna speak for the commission, but I think if they, the agreement should be simple.
Yeah.
Bring the roads back to the pre-existing condition. Have something in there that the road, public works, the road superintendent will approve of as they go forward with the process. We'll help with gravel, they take care of the wells, and bond through the amount. Because without financially promise, we're really nowhere. We're no, we're not anywhere at this point in time, in my opinion, I just...
Yeah, and I think a simple agreement is really easy to do, and I think that's what we were working on with Western Oil, but...
I was assuming maybe he would be here this morning with something based on his email.
Has he been contacted the clerk's office at all about when this meeting was?
I, I sent him a text yesterday, and it shows it delivered. I said, hi, James, meeting on the road is tomorrow at 8:00 AM in the regular room. And I didn't hear nothing back.
He called and left a message on my voicemail, I don't know if it was yesterday or the day before, saying, we're here for the meeting. I think it was at 8:30 yesterday, perhaps. But I was not, I, I was busy all morning on conference calls and working to call him back.
The other meeting that was with him was here yesterday before we had our, our meeting on the grid flex, thinking it was yesterday. I said, no, it's not, it's tomorrow.
So you told her?
I told her, she was right out here, and so she said, okay. But I mistakenly told her nine, and when I met with Travis, I told him, I told Blaney nine. And so Travis and I, when we did the agenda yesterday, he sent, immediately sent a text message to James saying that it was at eight. And that was right yesterday at three o'clock. So right now, where we're at, if somebody has his phone number or his text, try to get him ahold of him one more time, give him one more opportunity to be here, because we need to move forward with this, with this agenda item. So let's, he knows what time it was, let's see if we can catch him, and try to accommodate him as much as we can. Otherwise, we're gonna move forward with this, I feel we should move forward with this item.
Well, you see in the item, it's, we, I even drafted it in such a way that they could obtain the BLM approved bonding within 30 days, so they can just get the agreement in place with Bill, other responsibility and what the next steps are gonna be. Trying to make it as easy as possible.
Just assurances.
This was even giving them an extra day.
I think... He, I mean, he's, like I said, he dropped the agreement off, Bill did his due diligence, he sent over his comments, I forwarded it to James. He recognized, he received the comments from Bill, and then all they had to do was incorporate them and send a draft over to Bill. Or ask us to incorporate them and prepare the draft for the day. Yeah, check your email one more time, but I didn't have any other emails or correspondence from you.
Here's James now. Hi, James, we're here at the meeting.
Oh, okay, I thought the meeting was at nine.
Nope, eight. And then I dropped.
Travis?
Yeah? Uh, it's at eight, we're here already, if you can run up quick. Okay, see you in a second. Yep, bye.
He's at nine. He, he's in town.
They're coming right now, yeah.
Okay, so where are we at, Mike?
Take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same, the same, right, and give him, afford every opportunity that we can. Does anybody have a phone number for the BLM? Does anybody know that number, Jared's number, or?
BLM phone number and email, real quick.
1-800-1800, maybe?
1800.
Is it?
1-800-1800.
Yeah.
1800.
...action, the approval of satisfactory arrangement with Western Oil, Horace, and Western Gold for road maintenance of County Road 1177 contingent upon obtaining BLM-approved sufficient bond for 117, County Road 1177 within 30 days. So Bill, why don't you give us that same update you just did for...
I just updated the commission on the gorilla snot, you did the 500-foot test, and Martin had went out and looked at it. Oh, and then on the gravel pits where we're at with those, we're waiting for the BLM. And then for the water permits, we are ready to roll with whatever number I said for an application. But the next step has to be with you guys to work out some kind of financial agreement with basin engineering to pay for his, their cost, and then the cost for the actual application to the state and on our, on the county's behalf. This is it with basin engineering, they are aware that you'll be in to get those, work out that financial agreement with them, and then we will be moved forward with getting the wells applications going. We're also going to submit, talking to BJ, we're probably gonna submit for a temporary application and then a...
Perpetual.
A what? Permanent, sorry, a permanent application. The temporary process will be quicker. So that's his recommendation to go, excuse me?
I'm sorry, is it two or three?
Two is what we have identified now. And we've moved, we used your recommendation for water, and then we moved another one. And the other place we're looking is adjacent to the road, it's just easier for us. And we've moved everything that we originally requested in prime sage grass habitat. We moved it into general, just trying to make this process go quicker.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we're at, is right now with you guys, and taking that next step with water and with BLM with gravel.
Okay, great.
Bill, can you talk real quick about them covering the cost for the engineering services for the water rights?
That's, yeah, that's just kind of what I just, yeah, that's, okay.
I was reading.
It's about, I think it's, it's, I believe it's about $2,500 for BJ's, and it has to go through an engineer.
Yeah.
Per application, and then whatever, I think the states is three or $400 for an actual application.
So that's... Any problem with that, James?
No problem, sir.
So I have a, this agreement looks like, I have my hand, I has incorporated suggestions from Bill. It talks about the forage minus gravel, it talks about that they will obtain, it says here, "In addition to appropriate BLM minerals exploration bond will be obtained for the road damage at an amount set by BLM and obtained by Western Oil, Western Gold will look for 30 days of execution", which is exactly what we asked them to do. Because it takes a while for BLM to get, do that calculation and give them an amount. That's not something they can just come up with. Because BLM's the one that's requiring a mineral exploration bond for that road. It's a difference than the other bonds they have in place already. Is that cleared everyone?
Yes.
Down here's this county inspection and work review. Road repairs should be monitored by the road department with financial compensation on a weekly basis with Bill Calderwood or Martin having authority to approve roads as acceptable. It talks a little about the storage and the type of material they're gonna use, and kind of talks about water and gravel and their plan for that, and it's very short and sweetie grin. And that's kind of what, that's what Bill had asked for.
Yeah.
This is Lori Carson. Where are we at on bonding?
So we'll let James give an update to the county commission about the steps that he understands to obtain the mineral exploration bond, and, and can you come tell him about who you might be working with at the BLM on that paperwork, that process, please?
James, will you come up, would you state your name, please, and, and, thank you.
Lori, James Franklin, Exploration Manager for Western Oil.
And that's for the people on the phone. Their visual is not of the people that speak at the microphone, it's, all it is is of the board.
Okay, sure, thank you. James Franklin, Western Oil, Western Gold. We, I've been working with Elizabeth Bench at the BLM on the bonding, and we are waiting for Elizabeth to come back, she's out for about a week. And so we'll be working to put that on together. We previously, last week bonded for 105,000 with the BLM, and we'll find out how much additional bonding that the BLM needs for our exploration bond. As Bill said, we have completed the test on the soil tech on 800 feet of the road with good results. I'm pleased with that, and we're going to, I believe, continue treating.
The report we received this morning was that your gorilla snot, although you put it on there in good effort, doesn't look like it's having much effect on the road, so...
We believe in long-lasting, I don't know that...
Yeah, I think that the soil tech is different from the gorilla snot. The soil tech was put on a road that doesn't need water. The gorilla snot is one that hardens, and you don't wanna put it on something that's soft, as we couldn't understand. The soil tech was just reduce the dust, which was the, which was the objective. We'll go out there again today and look at it, but after they did, it looked like it wasn't working, and just drive it down the road.
Okay, so, so we moved from what was called the gorilla snot to soil tech?
Um, yes, Lord, there are actually two products, one is the gorilla snot, the other is the soil tech, same company. But one of those, the gorilla snot cannot be put on something that's soft. So you wanna put, you wanna harden the road first and then put the gorilla snot on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, Lord...
I do have, go ahead. I have a couple things. In the agreement, and this is partially my fault, it does only speak to one water well, and I believe, I don't know if you can do this, but I believe that number would be the number for 1177.
Yes.
I think so. So one, we're looking at one, 1177, and the one thing I have question on the bonding, it says we bonded with the BLM for 105,000, 500 to bond our repair work from access road to 1177, and then north on 1177 for 53, 53,000 linear feet?
Yes.
So that's, that's a little over 10 miles, so where is it again? I'm not clear on this.
It should cover the 1177 road entirely from 50 to the drill site and down the drill site to the access road.
So the 105 is for total amount of 1177?
Yes, from, just from the access to five, 250, sorry, 250, pardon me.
That's all that was required originally before the damage. That's why BLM's requiring a minerals exploration separate bond for 1177 that they're working on.
Okay.
That's all they were required to do originally, and they did obtain that. That's obviously not adequate, but that's...
That's what my concern is, but the second bond is what we're working towards, okay?
I understand that. Does that make sense to you, James, do you also see that?
Yeah, it is, although I have to talk to BLM, and I haven't gotten the numbers or the...
You haven't got the numbers from BLM for the mineral exploration bond?
Correct.
And you're waiting for Elizabeth Bench to return?
Yes, sir.
Can we add some things? The product, this was my project.
Could you come up, could you come up, please, and, and state your name?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth, and the product we've used, the company Soil Works, the product that we've determined to use best by examining carefully and having consultations about 1177 is Durasol. And that product, what it does is dust abatement and also compaction. When you look at it, it just looks like you don't really see anything. But it's a product that lasts for up to two years. And so it went on, the whole application looked really great, and it's done exactly the way that it was supposed to be done, so we're very enthusiastic to see how it performs. I mean, on the first day, it doesn't look like much, but it's got a job to do. And it never gets hard, and you can drive on it immediately, which we were able to do, and it did not modify, you know, disturb anything. So I feel very encouraged about the product and the statements and claims that they made about it. And I'm also in charge of making contact with Elizabeth at BLM. And we've been making phone calls and emails daily, and each time that I would leave one, the next day I would call back, and then she was gonna be, her message changed, I'm gonna be gone now. And, you know, from Thursday, Friday, and Sat, on Monday, and then I called back again, and then now she's gonna be gone for a week. So we're really endeavoring and staying on top of the project, and I just wanted to give you an update on that.
If there are any more questions, my recommendation at this time is this road agreement is contingent upon that minerals exploration bond that the county would like to have in place with the BLM, okay? He has 30 days to acquire, if you were to execute this agreement today, he would, they would have 30 days to acquire the mineral exploration bond. If the mineral exploration bond is not obtained, I mean, absent BLM saying something else or not being able to get to it or whatever, we'll have a presentation from BLM on that, but if they can't obtain the bond within 30 days, then the agreement is revoked and normal voice automatic. So it's my recommendation at this time that legally, if there's, this is satisfactory to the road department, and that they will get the bond within 30 days, and they're checking with the road department, that you can approve this agreement.
Richard, where the request was to have BLM on the phone, did you want them to speak or anything?
I would love them to speak, I'd like to hear from them. That was the intent of having item two read before item number one.
Especially if they can talk on the mineral exploration bond.
Yes.
And without hearing from them, we've contacted, Cody's contacted us, we've contacted Jared.
Jared's on.
Jared?
He was on, he's not anymore. Yeah, Cody was still on, huh?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the BLM before they hand a decision.
Yeah, that's why we put two up there, I wanna hear from the BLM, I met with him last Monday. And Jared, or Cody, could you get ahold of Jared or somebody, somebody from BLM, please talk to us while we're in this meeting? We don't wanna, we wanna make sure we touch every base. We would love to hear from the BLM on this, on this item before we move any further. It's important, Jared was on, now he's off, I don't know if he's in a meeting.
I don't know if they can hear me talking from here either, so Lori, you might have to explain.
Yeah, this is Cody, I'll, I'll see if I can get ahold of him. I can't really speak to anything regarding what's going on with this, but he was on, looks like he dropped off, I'll see if I can get him back on.
Please.
All right, the idea is we don't wanna set anyone up for failure and say, yeah, this is, we're gonna do an agreement with them, that they just have to get a mineral exploration bond, but the mineral exploration bond is impossible to get. We just need to know that.
Yeah.
We've had so many discussions and so many hurdles, it's time we get on with this item.
Look, my, my whole theme in this, show me the money, all right? Show us the bond, that we have assurances, that's, I mean, we really don't have much to do with this project other than knowing that the money is there so that we can get the road repaired. That's it. So as long as they can actually obtain a mineral exploration bond, because that's what BLM is trying to do, then that's my only, that's my only hang-up on this agreement for the next 30 days, and we'll know. Once that bond's in place...
Well, I personally don't wanna hold off for 30 more days, although that's what it says. We've been here now, this is our fourth time we've been in meetings with this special meeting, but to hold, to open the road or continue a status quo for 30 more days, I don't think I have an appetite to do that.
Well, Richard, in your conversation, you said you met with BLM last week, was, what was the discussion on the, the exploration bond?
They have, they have some concerns, serious concerns about many items that were on there, the BLM. I can't get into too much detail about one of them, they have, like I can tell you, they have serious concerns about this whole project and the, and the process that it's going through. And that's why it's important that we do too, to hear from, I met with Jared Bybee and Robbie, the new district manager. So they have serious concerns, and that's why I, until we're on with our co-partners, which is the BLM, I don't... I'm just speaking for myself, okay? I don't...
Yeah, this is Cody, Chairman.
Yes?
Jared's on his way down there, he should show up there in person, he said he got kicked off of Zoom, so he's on his way, should show up in, in person here in a few minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, go ahead.
We'll close down recess until he gets here, thank you.
Richard, I have a question. Did you turn for Mike?
Uh, Mike, is there any way legally with the county that they could put an escrow account or a cash bond with us? Like, is there, is there a mechanism for that? I'm just thinking outside, out loud here.
Yeah. I guess Elizabeth would have to talk about more, about taking monies and setting them to an account that we're responsible for. Makes me a little nervous. And then, just like landlord who has a tenant who puts a cleaning deposit down, and then the tenant destroys the house, and the landlord gets to say how much it's worth, there sometimes leaves that open for litigation, you know? there sometimes leaves that open for litigation, you know, so.
Or maybe we could just start with something really.